Okay, I'd like to call to order the Gig Harbor City Council meeting of Monday, February 8th, 2020. The time is 5:32. Due to public health concerns, this meeting will be accessible by phone by dialing 253-215-8782 and entering the meeting ID 93278286640, or through Zoom, which has been provided at our website. I feel it's important to read this since we're meeting remotely, in virtual meetings. Comments are only allowed during designated portions of the meeting. To speak during the meeting, press the raised hand button near the bottom of your Zoom window, or press *9 on your phone. Please refrain from raising your hand until the mayor has announced that he has opened the public comment portion of the meeting. Your name or your last four digits of your phone number will be called out when it's your turn to speak. When using your phone to call in, you may need to press *6 to unmute yourself. All speakers have up to three minutes to speak. Instead of speaking live, you may have submitted comments in writing before the meeting. Your input questions must have been provided to the city clerk by 3:00 PM on Monday afternoon prior to the meeting. All written comments must be able to be read in three minutes or less to be included in the record and have the title for public comment included. You can always send your comments from our website to mtownsley@gigharborwalled.gov. Written comments will be read during appropriate agenda time. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please say here after I call your name, Councilmember Abersold.
Here.
Councilmember Denson.
Here.
Councilmember Fannich. Okay, we see that he's still trying to connect. We'll come back to him. Councilmember Heim.
Here.
Councilmember Markley.
Here.
Councilmember Rodenberg.
Here.
Councilmember Wook.
Here.
And Councilmember Fannich. Okay, we'll jump in when you get your audio working. This is Mayor Kuhn. We have our city administrator, Bob Larson.
Here.
Community Development Director Katrina Knutson.
Here.
Chief Kelly Bucy.
I'm here.
IC Director Keith Smith.
Here.
Public Works Director Jeff Langham.
Here.
We have City Clerk Molly Townsley.
Here.
Assistant City Clerk Josh Tucker.
Here.
We have our attorney Daniel Kinney.
Here.
Thank you. And with our guests, we have Maurice Hanks.
Here.
We have John Howell.
Here.
And Marty Koestra.
Here, thank you.
Here.
Great, and let's see, where'd he go? I lost. Okay, well, anyone that I haven't called. Okay, when we have our councilmember Fannich back, we will recognize him. With that, let's please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Mayor, we can't hear you.
Councilmember Fannich, are you there?
Yes.
Okay, great. Called on everyone, and everyone is there. So changes to the agenda. We have several 2020 yearly reports from our nonprofits and different organizations. And I'm sure that council, the public, and myself would like to hear from those organizations how they're coping, and that council maybe even have some questions. So with that, we'll be holding off on their reports and pulling them off the consent agenda, which is the Scancy Foundation, Net Shed Foundation, the Chamber of Commerce, and the Downtown Waterfront Alliance. And we'll be pulling it off the consent agenda so that they can give us the report on their own soon at upcoming meeting. And it will be nice for, it'll be nice to hear from them so we can support them and let them give their own report. With that, are there any other changes to the agenda? Okay, first, I, so with those items, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
There's a second? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Pose. Abstain, motion passes on the consent minus the reports, which we'll have, we'll have them come as soon as possible. We've got two presentations tonight. We have Black, it's a Black History Month proclamation, and our guest speaker is Maurice Hanks. I think it's much more powerful to do the proclamation after we've actually heard from our speaker. So I prefer to read it after we've heard his presentation. And with that, I'll turn it over to Maurice.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, appreciate it. Thank everyone for, for listening to me today. For those who don't know me, I'm Maurice Hanks, I've lived in the community here for over 20 years, 25 years. I'm currently out on Fox Island, and what I want to do today is sort of give us this little breath to what Black History Month is about, and see if we can all learn a little bit and move forward. Next slide. When we think of traditional Black History Month, there's some, the names, the same names come up. You're familiar with Martin Luther King, civil rights icon, just an outstanding individual. Won a Nobel Peace Prize in 1964, truly believed in peaceful civil disobedience. Everyone knows him. Next, Muhammad Ali, the greatest. Everyone knows Muhammad Ali. If you didn't, back when you were a kid, he would let you know. Muhammad Ali was an activist, a philanthropist, and the greatest of all time, and a conscientious objector to not wanting to, to go to battle because of his religious beliefs. Rosa Parks, everyone knows the young lady that didn't give up her seat. Civil rights icon. Jackie Robinson, he broke the color line in baseball, big number 42, everyone knows that. And my, one of my favorites is Harriet Tubman. Back when I was a little kid, I did a little report on her, on how she was an abolitionist, came out of slavery and saved so many blacks from persecution and even death. And of course, today, we all know Barack Obama. He was our first black president, Nobel Peace Prize winner. He was also the leader of the Harvard Review. But what I want to do is I want to introduce you some new people that maybe you haven't heard of. We'll do that first, next slide. But first, we have to remember, Black History, when did it start? I personally, most black folks don't like Black History Month because Black History is a part of American history. But our school book tells us it started in 1619 when the first ships came from Africa bearing 20 slaves to Virginia. And those individuals were brought here mainly for labor, for their labor. Now, you, there's more than just labor that blacks have given us. And here's some of those, maybe people you don't know, but you might should know. Next slide. Shirley Chisholm, an icon. Just like every black woman, leader of her household. Shirley was the first African-American woman, black woman in Congress in 1968. She also ran for president in 1972. Side note, during her run for president, she had two attempts on her life. Things change, they can and they will. Next slide. Now, all of us being here in Gig Harbor, remember 20 years ago, we didn't have very many lights. But Garrett Morgan, the inventor of the traffic light, three signal traffic light. So along with other smaller inventions, like the sewing machine. So when you're, whether you're sewing or stopped at a light, think about who made that. Next slide. Now, when we get into the sciences, George Guthers was an outstanding young man at the age of 10. He designed his first telescope. He earned his PhD from the University of Illinois in 1964 in aeronautic engineering. He and his telescope were used to identify the first molecular hydrogen atom in space and helped Apollo 16. Small, small thoughts from black people. Next slide. You know, if you work for NASA, you got to have fun. And Lonnie Johnson was one of those guys. In the propulsion labs on his free time, he designed the Super Soaker. I know I've used it in a pool, so think about, think about that the next time you're in a water fight. And it made him about a million bucks. Next slide. Now, when you think of millionaires, who do we think of? Black Americans. Oprah Winfrey. Actually, CJ, Madam CJ Walker was before Oprah. She was a safe, self-made millionaire by making hair products for black hair, because they had nothing for it. Madam Walker's wonderful hair grower. Before Oprah. Next slide. I spent most of my time in science, and Henry Aderlax is just, was just a simple woman who was a tobacco farmer. She lived in Baltimore. She became ill with cervical cancer. She went in, when she went into Johns Hopkins to have the tumors looked at, unbeknownst to her or the doctors. Normally, and then when this procedure is done, when they biopsy the patient, they save the cells, they die. In her case, they noticed every 24 hours, they would replicate. And they, she was the founder of the first immortal line of immortality line of human cells called the HeLa cells. And those cells have been used over the years to help create a vaccine for polio, vaccine treatments for cancer, HIV, and even Parkinson's disease. We owe a lot to this young woman. Side note, her family had no idea that the doctors took her cells and used them, and her family received no financial benefit from the use of her cells or any acknowledgement at all until just recently. Next slide. Now, when you think of America, you think of our troops, fighting for our troops. Nothing's more American than that. The Harlem Hellfighters. These young men were bad. When I say bad, I mean they were honorary. And back in World War I and II, the French needed help. And this regiment was, was asked to go over there because white Americans would not fight with them. They didn't trust them. But the French needed the help. When they went over there, they spent the most time in the trenches, 191 days. They lost over 1,500 men. And out of those men, there was one gentleman by the name of Henry Johnson. His nickname was Black Death. Because he held off a pack of Germans, killing five, holding off 100 for over an hour after being shot. Came back to the US, no recognition. There were no equal rights. Until just recently, when he posthumously got the Medal of Honor for, from Barack Obama. Great young man, doing the people's work. Next slide. The Tuskegee Airmen, near and dear to my heart, my grandfather was in the Air Force. These young men fought over 150 different distinguished awards for their bravery, for their, for their expertise. And they were known because their tail of their airplanes had a red tail. And this group, the Tuskegee Airmen, also were integral part of integrating the armed forces. Remember them. Next slide. Now, everyone thinks of golf. The first person you think of is Tiger Woods. Well, Charlie Sinford was the first black golfer to actually be in the PGA. They call him the Joe Lewis of golf back then. He golfed at over 422 tournaments, over 50 top 10 finishes, and 22 titles. Not quite as good as Tiger, but he got done. Next slide, please. Chad Boson. Great man. And the reason I put him up, and I think people need to know who he was. He was a playwright. He studied at Howard University, which is a historically black college. My daughter went there. And he gave young black kids with his playing a Black Panther hope. Hope that black people aren't all, black men aren't all bad. So he was a heavy loss. Next slide. Emmanuel Ocho. And you can look at this young man, he's got shoulders like a tank. He's a former linebacker in the NFL, and now you may see him on, as an analyst for football. And this young man did something that we all need to do. He saw the uneasiness that was going on the last three, four years. And he set up his own platform to try to, to talk, talk. And he invented a little program called, hold on, Uncomfortable Conversations with a Black Man. Outstanding. If you haven't had a chance to look at it, look him up on YouTube. Or even so, now that he's worked with Oprah, he has a book out. Great young man, doing God's work, helping people understand each other and move closer together. Next slide. Now, what are things you can do? I'm just trying to get you to see, understand, learn. You can read more about Black History. You can listen for things you don't know or haven't heard of. Take time to, to introduce yourself, grow your circle for people who are not like you. And the reason I say that is because we're all family. We're all family, the human family. And Black History Month is American history as well. I hope you take this, I hope this was good for you. If you have any questions, don't hesitate to give me a call. Thank you very much.
Yes, Councilmember Denson.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Mr. Hanks, that was, that was wonderful. I have a question for you, actually. One of the things that I've heard from a lot of our residents is that they would like to see greater diversity on our boards and commissions. You know, we've got a number of different boards and commissions that are volunteers for the city. Do you have suggestions for ways that we can reach out to the black community and make sure that they know that they're welcome, that we want to hear their voice in our city and make sure that all of our, all residents are represented in the city?
That's a, that's a great question. I've lived here, like I said, 25 years. And I've gone out and reached out to people. I think what you have to do is you, you just have to be who you are and show your heart, your true heart. Because if you haven't met around a lot of, I call them brown, brown, black, different people than you are. We are an emotional people, we're very caring people. And they just, just like you or anyone else, just want someone who cares about what's important to them. That's all. Just keep reaching out and keep asking. You have, just keep asking. You're doing the right thing, just keep asking. And sometimes you gotta be a little pushy. They like that too, we like that too.
Well, thank you, Maurice. I'd like to read this proclamation. Proclamation of the Mayor of the City of Gig Harbor. Whereas Black History Month is observed in February of each year. And whereas Black History Month seeks to emphasize Black history and its cultural contributions to American life, and is designed to recognize and pay tribute to the many contributions of African-Americans to the history, society, and culture of the United States of America. And whereas Black History Month celebrates the achievements of African-Americans in the arts, civil rights, education, entertainment, government, history, law, literature, medicine, military, music, politics, science, sports, and other endeavors. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Kit Kuhn, Mayor of the City of Gig Harbor, hereby declare the month of February 2021 as Black History Month. In witness whereof, I have here unto set my hand and cause a seal of the City of Gig Harbor to be affixed this 8th day of February 2021. And as it shows from all the types of achievements there throughout our whole culture of influencing us. So thank you, Maurice, for your presentation. We very much appreciate it. Thank you. And with that, our second presentation is South Sound Housing, Housing Affordability Partners, SHAPE, Funding and Support, John Howell and Marty Howdy, Koestra. What nationality is that, Marty?
It's Dutch, American, yes.
How do you say it?
Koestra, K-O. Yeah, there you go. You did it.
Thank you. Well, I've worked with both of you for the last two years or more, and appreciate you giving this presentation to council. You've also worked with our Community Development Department at Katrina Knutson. And very much appreciate you coming to our council meeting. And with that, I'll turn it over to both of you.
Great, thank you very much, Mayor. My name's John Howell. I'm a partner in a small consulting firm called Cedar River Group. I'll let Marty introduce himself in a moment. We do work around the Puget Sound region. I've actually done quite a bit of work with Pierce County and even a couple of projects involving Gig Harbor in the past. And we have been asked to help the elected officials who have come together around this idea of the South Sound Housing Affordability Partners, or SHAPE, to help them make a decision about whether or not they want to create a formal structure to collaborate together on affordable and attainable housing. So Marty, you want to introduce yourself, and then we'll get going?
Thank you, John. Marty Koestra, I work for the Housing Development Consortium in King County, but also do some work on the side periodically. And most often, when I get a chance to work with Mr. Howell, I take advantage of that. We have had some experience working together with other subregional groups and find this to be very rewarding work.
Great. So our plan here for this PowerPoint is to do a little tag teaming. I'll do a few slides, Marty will talk about a few, and Katrina is going to talk about at least one of these. And because Mayor Kuhn has been involved in these conversations, as he said, for nearly two years and for, for much of the last year, has been meeting monthly with other elected officials across the county. Please, Mayor Kuhn, do jump in from time to time if Marty or I go astray, or you don't think we're covering points we need to.
You got it, thank you.
So, let's see, let me share. Okay, so we've introduced ourselves. The, the work of SHAPE, as we will refer to it this evening, actually predates when Marty and I have been involved. Marty and I have been involved for about a year, but as Mayor said, this work has been going on for about two years. We'll have a slide for just a moment, in just a moment, that describes that. But it is the elected officials who themselves came up with this notion of working together collaboratively on affordable housing issues. And I just referred to affordable housing issues. One of the things that Mayor Kuhn has been quite strong about in his comments, and we're still talking about what the final name will be. The group has come to understand that this is about both affordable and attainable housing. That, you know, it needs to be attainable for multiple income levels across the county. So we're not just talking about low-income housing here, although that's certainly a piece of it. But we're talking about housing that is attainable for a number of income levels. We want to talk with you this evening about a couple of things, the sort of how did we get here? What, and, and part of the how did we get here, we'll, we'll cover just a little bit of data. We'll try not to overwhelm you with data slides, but a couple of things will sort of provide the context. What is it that SHAPE would do, which is just a fundamental question that always appropriately gets asked? Where are we currently in the work? What's going to happen next? And ultimately, what's the decision that you and other councils will be asked to make about SHAPE? So how did we get here? So Katrina, unless things have changed, I think you were going to talk about this slide.
Thanks, John. Just very briefly, wanted to talk about several meetings that we've had. John mentioned that Mayor Kuhn regularly participates in the SHAPE Steering Committee with the other elected officials. Just briefly mentioned here that our long-range planner, Carl DeCemis, has sat in on several staff-level discussions that are seeking to look at what the electeds are talking about from a a practical planning standpoint of how we would effectuate those things. Additionally, in October 5th, there was initial briefing from John and the mayor to our Black Planning and Building Committee, just giving a brief overview of SHAPE and what the next steps looked like at that time. On December 7th, there was an additional discussion with Planning and Building Committee with a recommendation to move forward to the full council. That was a, the request that council you'll be hearing this evening. So do note through this presentation that John's giving that So do note through this presentation that John's giving that the Planning and Building Committee has heard this information and passed it forward to the council with a, with their recommendation. And I believe that we are here on February 8th, and I'll turn it back over to John.
So the last thing, at the bottom of the screen, when we spoke with the mayor and Katrina and Carl, they said, just let the council know upfront ultimately what the ask is going to be. So again, we've got to slide towards the very end of this presentation. But the level of financial contribution that we're talking about varies from government to government depending on the population. And Gig Harbor's contribution would be in the range of four to $4,000 to $4,500, depending on how many governments choose to participate. Marty?
Okay, thank you, John. And we're going to, just as John mentioned, go through just some data slides quickly. None of this is new to you. It's just, we put this in as context, just to keep reminding ourselves of what we're facing.
Ripped from the headlines, as they say.
I might add one thing too, which is very nice about the whole. The whole group of all the counties is, we have an equal vote with all these groups. It's huge. When, when we meet with the, with Tacoma or other cities that are a lot larger, they all agree that everyone should have the equal amount of one vote. So that's, that says a lot about our group. It says a lot about this, where we've come. I just wanted our council to know that.
Thank you, Mayor.
It's great. So, and just looking at some of the changes in rent that we've been experiencing. This just came out from the Seattle Times about a month ago. You can see Gig Harbor rent increased at 3.9% in 2020. Again, nothing that you don't already experience every day. And we look at housing affordability specifically in Pierce County. You're looking at a fair market rent for a two-bedroom apartment being about $14,000. If you look at households that are working at 30% or $26,000 annually in income, they can afford rent at 655. If you look at a household that earning about 52,000 or 60% of area median income, they can handle a rent burden of about 1,300. So neither of those households can actually afford the current rent. Similarly, excuse me, when we look at buying a home, the estimated income needed to purchase a home, median sales price would be 95,000. And again, median household income puts you at 77,000. So there's a discount disconnect there. And this note at the bottom, we just want to keep reminding folks that incomes generally in Pierce County are 20% less than they are in King County, while construction costs to produce a home are only about 5% less. When we talk about cost burdening, we're talking about households that pay more than 30% of their income for their housing expenses. And you can see here for those at the lower incomes, there's a much greater number of rental households that are cost burdened currently in Pierce County. When you move up the income stream, the number of households, either in rental or in ownership in the darker blue, decreases significantly. And just doing a little bit of homage to Maurice and his presentation. Of course, we see that cost burdened households in many counties in the Puget Sound region are disproportionately people of color.
Yes, Councilmember Frannich, did you have a question?
Yes.
Go ahead, proceed.
Do these, when, when you're talking about the 30% for housing costs, does that include rent and utilities?
Yes.
Yes. And was there anything else that's included in that?
No, rent and utilities, less telephone.
It does not, for example, include transportation costs.
Yeah.
What about cable TV?
Uh, I don't know for sure.
Okay, proceed. Thank you.
So this is just a quick slide on the projections of growth put out by the Puget Sound Regional Council for Vision 2050, the next round of planning. And we can see there the estimated number of households in Pierce County. If you click the next slide, John, or the next, yeah, and then one more. This doesn't allow us to reflect the current need that we're facing as well. So this is just the projections of what is going to have to happen in Pierce County between now and then, just to manage the growth. And then one more slide on data. When we talk about each of these segments of area median income, by the way, the slices or columns actually reflect the population segments as well. So they're a reflection of how the population is made up right now in the Puget Sound. But if you look on the far left, when we get into those extremely low and very low-income households, moving through the turquoise and the green into the orange, the number of or amount of public subsidy and public intervention and, and support that's required significantly increases in the lower we go on the income spectrum, thereby making it even more challenging to scale up our approaches in those areas. And then this is, as John mentioned, you've had a committed group working for some time from October 2018, when there was an initial mayor's roundtable and then a second roundtable, then in February of 2019. And really moving on down the pathway to the end of 2019, when a decision was made to bring on some consultant help, formulate the first legislative agenda and started in 2020, then doing a study with the University of Washington Tacoma, led by Dr. Ali Maderas, and then bringing on Cedar River Group in April of 2020. And completed this report, which I think all of you have had access to, or we can get to you if you're interested in seeing it in May. So this is all of the lead-up to the work that we've been doing now with the group. And as John and others have mentioned, there's a staff working group and a steering committee that has been active every month, moving this forward.
So, um, and we didn't say this at the beginning, but we are happy to come back and talk about any of these slides, any of the information here. We're just giving you a feel for the full presentation and then dig into whatever questions you may have. So, um, the obvious question is, what would this collaboration do? What would it accomplish? What value would it have for Gig Harbor or any other government that decides to join? We are fortunate in this region in that while nationally, this is an extremely cutting-edge idea. In the central Puget Sound region, there are three other subregional collaborations which have come together. So we can learn from them. We can watch what they've been able to achieve. One of them is in Snohomish County, the Alliance for Housing Affordability. Another one is in East King County called ARCH, a regional coalition for housing. And ARCH has the longest tenure here. They've got the, the longest track record and sort of have the most to show for it. And then a new partnership, a new collaboration amongst the cities in South King County called Skip. They have just been created within the last year plus. They don't have a long track record yet, but they are thoroughly engaged in providing support for the cities and the county in South King County. Mayor Backus, the mayor of Auburn, serves both as the chair of the executive board for Skip and she is a member of the steering committee, which has been a really helpful body of knowledge that she brings to the discussions about SHAPE. So what exactly would SHAPE do? This is, this is a slide that was prepared by the elected officials and the staff before Marty and I came on the scene. But it's a really good description in a broad sense about what SHAPE might do. And sort of divided into these three buckets. If there is a decision to proceed and if there is some staff capacity that is created for SHAPE, then that staff can provide technical assistance on comp plans, on code revisions, on land use regulations to any of the member jurisdictions related to affordable or attainable housing. It can serve as kind of a research arm on best practices for the member jurisdictions. And it can work with cities or the county and housing developers who are, need to form a liaison to understand each other's needs, figure out what's going to work or not work within various communities. So that's sort of individual support that the SHAPE structure can provide to a government. There is also power in coming together in this collaboration. So coming together around legislative priorities, coming together to find resources, perhaps on a voluntary basis, any jurisdiction that wanted to contribute local resources, but also pooling efforts to find philanthropic or other resources. And this notion of increasing the supply of housing through identification of pilot projects, which could be tested in one jurisdiction, potentially to be replicated elsewhere. And then finally, community, community education and advocacy that the group could do at the local or the state level. And then the, the last line here, centralized administration and transparency. The SHAPE would be administered by a single entity that take on the administrative chores, but not the governing chores. And the steering committee has had a conversation and has unanimously asked the county if they'd be willing to do the administrative work. And the county has agreed that if that were the desire of the group, they would be willing to do that.
Yeah, a couple of questions with Councilmember Frannich.
Yes, thank you. A few slides back, you had a slide there talking about the number of units needed. I was just wondering what you use, what your calculation was for.
Let's see, he froze.
Yep.
Give it a second. They had their hand raised for a mo, for a while, so I was trying to let you finish. But until then, we're going to go on to Council, Councilmember Abersold. You had a question? Do you still have it?
No, not really. I don't know if it's, um, never mind.
Okay.
Mayor, my apologies, but since I'm sharing the screen, I can only see about three or four of the participants. So I, I can't see when people.
No, that, I, I didn't want to interrupt you and I thought maybe it would be answered. So usually I call on them, but sometimes I didn't, I didn't want to interrupt you either. So no, no worries. That's my responsibility. So until Councilmember Frannich gets back, sorry about that. Why don't you proceed? And we're just going to wait for the questions at the end. So something like this doesn't happen again.
Okay. I'm going to go a little more quickly through these next couple. But one of the things.
Take your time.
We want to point out is we get asked all the time, what, what's the work plan? What specifically would SHAPE do? And the answer to that is, that will be determined by the member governments who come together and on an annual basis decide what the annual work plan is going to be. And what Marty and I have done, working with Carl and other members of, of the staff team, we've put together a whole set of possible topics and ideas, but we are not going to presume what the member governments are going to decide about what's going to meet their individual jurisdiction needs, what they could do together as a group that they think would be most powerful. So we're not trying to, to skip over that really important question. But the way this would be structured is that the members themselves will decide what the annual work plan will be. And that that, as I said earlier, some of the work will be individualized to a particular government or city. And other activities will be ones that will be more a collaboration amongst all of the members. There is an understanding in amongst all of the elected officials who are, are advocating for this idea of SHAPE, that every government, whether it's a city, a tribe, or a county, has different needs. And that if SHAPE is going to be successful, it has to structure a work plan that will be able to meet the needs of each of the individual members. So that's, that's a fundamental assumption here built into this. I think I'm going to skip over this one. Just to say that we want to emphasize that participation in SHAPE is completely voluntary. It's a coalition of the willing. So those governments that want to participate and choose to do so will become members. And those who do not want to participate will, at least for the time being, be on the sidelines. Although the intergovernmental agreement that's being crafted would allow for governments to join at a later time. Current status. So over the last year, Marty and I have been working with the steering committee and the staff group on quite a long list of documents and activities. We conducted interviews. We did focus groups with for-profit developers, nonprofit developers, community organizations. We've looked at other models around the region and around the nation. I mentioned a minute ago, this idea of work plan ideas, but not a specific work plan yet. We've drafted budget options for the elected officials to look at. We've taken a look at if the group were to decide that they wanted to create a capital fund, how could that be done? What kind of monies would be available for that? What it could be used for? I mentioned earlier that the group has talked about with the county, has asked the county if they'd be willing to serve as the administering agency for SHAPE. And we put together a multi-page frequently asked questions, which if you have not seen or, or don't have, we would be happy to provide that. In terms of where things stand literally today, the steering committee of elected officials has said they want to move beyond the informal collaboration that has been in place now for almost two years and move to a more formal collaborative structure with staff capacity. And as of now, there are 11 governments that have looked at the budget numbers, that have had introductory. that have had introductory briefings on this concept, and have said, we're interested enough that we want to look at an intergovernmental agreement to see what precisely we're buying into here. So we're in the process of having conversations like this with 11 other governments. And ultimately, there could be more, there could be less who sign up to shape, but that's where it stands today. We have been working with the elected officials on creating an intergovernmental agreement, and based on their guidance on a number of topics, one of which the mayor mentioned a minute ago, which is one vote per member. We now have a draft intergovernmental that we're going to be able to start circulating. And I've already mentioned the steering committee's recommendation about having Pierce County serve as the administering agency. The cities here whose logos are on the screen are the 11 that have expressed interest in the idea, expressed interest in wanting to understand what the intergovernmental agreement says and would commit them to. So that gives you a little flavor. And I've mentioned the FAQ document. Last few slides, Marty.
Here's what happens next. As John mentioned, we're working on this intergovernmental agreement, getting the final details in that draft put forward, and then we'll move that out to each of the jurisdictions that's interested to review it more carefully. Next slide. And we hope to be able to, this is aspirational, by June 2021, get agreement from all of the participating governments that want to participate, bring some direction to who would serve on that executive board, and initiate the process of hiring a staff person. So once the staff person's on board, of course, the, the big work then is to shape the work plan that will be in place, establish a community advisory board, and begin working on actually implementing the, the work. So for us, where we sit and working with you and the other governments, we're now in the process of starting these presentations, delivering those, getting interest from each government, and then finalizing that intergovernmental agreement and getting that final decision, as we mentioned. So this is the work we're on right now. So if we're here in Giga Harbor, what will we need to decide if we wanted to participate? First, you'll take a hard look at this intergovernmental agreement, including your city attorney. What are the details in there related to governance, voting rights, operating fund, all of those kinds of details? And you'll have time to review that in detail as, as a city. And then you'll have to make a determination on the financial commitment, and John already alluded to this early on. There's so many variables in terms of how many governments participate, which governments participate, but our range, you know, in some proximity would be for Gig Harbor commitment annually of $4,000 to $4,500 to participate. And finally, we just have a slide showing some various types of housing that have been produced in Pierce County. Senior housing, homeownership, some multifamily, et cetera, et cetera. So all of these are the kinds of things that we are aspiring to do more of.
You know, I might add a couple, a couple of great things about this is, again, this may seem like a first step. It's, it's been three years. I've been working with mayors of Pierce County to get to here, three years. A, a year and a half with these two gentlemen, and then Dr. Maderis, and then a year before, a, a part of a year before he came. So the nice thing, I, I know so many people my age who have their kids, which are a lot of your kids' age, trying to move to Gig Harbor. So a lot of 30-year-olds that are trying to, trying to live in Gig Harbor, trying to afford it. So the nice thing is, we're trying to work so you don't have to like leave high school, go away, make, make hundreds of thousands of dollars to be able to try to come back to the town you were raised in. The goal is to make it so that when you leave high school, you could actually get apartment that would be halfway reasonable, and make it so that you could save money with your rent, so that later down the road, when you want to buy a house, that works too. So it's not just one aspect of it, it's kind of a full circle. And, you know, the, the thing I like about this is we're setting, myself and other mayors, we're setting the foundation, the bylaws of, of this agreement that will probably go on for 15 to 20 years. So it's going to be, being able to be amended through time, but it is a start. And we've made it so other cities could sign on, and if more cities in only Pierce County, if, if other cities of Pierce County do sign on, it helps us all. You know, we have a lot of staff that don't live in Gig Harbor. But so if the place that they live is affordable, then they're apt to, you know, make a decent living. And same thing for us. So it helps your neighbor, it helps your neighbor. If we all do this together of Pierce County cities, we can just be stronger as a group. Council member Abersold.
Yes, I'm curious. So I guess I understand that what, what you're really doing is trying to pool together a collective of elected officials to have conversations about affordable housing, but I would see this group as, as maybe something akin to a lobbyist group. And my question is, is if we were to buy into this, what kind of teeth does this group have? What can it offer to a city that makes a city want to listen to it and respect its opinions? Because like you said, every city has different competing and contrasting needs. So, you know, maybe this board is made up of people of Pierce County, but do people in Snohomish County, are they going to want to listen to what we have to say?
So I'm, I'm going to answer that in a couple of ways, and, and Marty and Mayor please chime in. First of all, something that I, I realize that I wasn't very clear about, I, I'm going to get to your question about advocacy in a second. But the structure here, the cost that we described to Gig Harbor and, and cost to every participant is to fund staff capacity, currently starting staff capacity of 1.5 FTE. And what that staff capis, capacity would do, it, it's really to your question of sort of where's the bite, or even where's the meat? That staff capacity becomes capacity available to all member governments who want to do work on affordable and attainable housing. So for some cities, some of the smaller and mid-sized cities who have very limited staff capacity to work on housing issues, this, a central pooled staff can help with comp plan updates, zoning regulations, which might have an influence on the ability to create more affordable or attainable housing. So there's, there's actual work that staff would do for member cities, and that's going to vary depending on the needs of the city. Then to your second point, which is where's the bite? This group has already, even before shape was created in a formal structure, they realized that they have clout in Olympia, and they can have clout other places at PSRC or other regional forums when they come together and speak or advocate with one voice. So for the last two legislative sessions, they put together a legislative priorities letter which defined some housing priorities that the group of mayors and council members who were around the table could agree to, and sent that to the Pierce delegation. When there is a more formal structure and there is some staff capacity, there is probably a little greater ability to then not just send off a letter, but push that agenda, advocate for that agenda. So there is bite, if you will, both on the advocacy side, but also in the creation of some staff capacity.
Right, I might add, you know, Marty and, and John are not, are not going to stay with us forever. They're going to, they're going to go on to new things. So what this allows us to do is actually hire a 1.5 with all the cities together to hire a 1.5 FTE. And Pierce County has offered to donate the space for that 1.5 to work at. So, you know, I'm impressed. For three years I worked with these mayors, and we get along. And we're really, we're really nice to each other, we get along, and as a result, we're going to, we have more clout because we're unified, and we're working as one, which is just, you know, you're stronger if you work as a group and you have a combined voice. And if you don't, we work through those issues. So it's been very, very good that way. We'll have more power in Olympia. We'll work on zoning. Um, we might be able to find the right builders, the right, the right land that could come to us available. So a collaboration of effort. Council member Frannage.
Yeah, wha, what is your projected yearly budget?
Yeah. I'm going to, let's see.
We're hoping to have all these, all the cities sign on and within the next two to three months.
Marty, since I'm sharing the screen, it's either I, I have to stop sharing to get into the Excel spreadsheet, or can you call that up on your computer and?
I'm looking for it right now.
Yeah. It's a, while, while Marty's looking for that, th, there's not a lot of, of, of layering on of administrative costs here. It's the cost of 1.5 FTE. There's a sort of a 10% admin fee that will probably not come close to covering all of the county's costs for IT and legal and space and supplies, but we thought it was fair to provide some administrative compensation. And in terms of the expense budget, that's, that's it. It's the 1.5 FTE and, and a 10% admin number. Are you able to find that, Marty?
Not yet, I'm sorry.
That's okay. We'll go on with other questions until.
And, and as soon as I stop sharing, I, I, I can get the document. I, I don't want to give the council member incorrect numbers without looking at the document.
But, yeah, and in case you have to go back to a slide, keep your, keep your power to have the screen. Council member Woo.
Yes, I'm looking at the slide with all the city names on there. And it seems like the city na, the city names without a logo are not on board with this yet. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct, but it's, it would not be correct to say that they have turned down an invitation to participate. There are some on the list that have just not been interested. They haven't been participating in the meetings with shape. There are others on the list who have participated and have said, we want to talk to our council. So Stilicum and University Place would be examples of that category, where the mayors have said, the mayors have had enough interest to participate in some of the meetings, but have not had a chance to discuss this in enough depth with the council. As we have done with your council committee, having had two conversations with your committee previously, some of these cities haven't had that opportunity.
Have they had presentations yet? Are all the city presentation? No.
No. No, the, the steering committee wanted to get this far enough along to a point where we could give the sort of presentation we're giving tonight to say, here's what we're be, here's what's proposed, here's the budget impact, here's the issues that we're working on with the intergovernmental agreement. So we're now poised to go wherever we're invited on this.
Isn't this your second or third city?
Yes, well, we had a presentation with the county council, newly elected county council member a couple of weeks ago. You're the actual first full council who's receiving the presentation. We have another one scheduled in Ordin mid-month. And then others that I'm certain will follow.
Great. Other questions by council? Okay, now some, some mayors haven't, um, are probably just going to have their council more than, more than likely, the, the cities have been supportive of this, that have spent so much time like myself. Some will pass it without, with their council, without even having to have John and Marty come to them. But I, I thought it was important, I've been anxious to share this with council. I thought it was great to have John and Marty actually share it with you. Council member Markley.
Yes, thank you. First, I just wanted to thank John and Marty for this presentation, and thank Mayor Kuhn for working so hard on this. I'm very supportive of this. I think I mentioned that the first time that the mayor brought this up. Working with the homeless currently, I know this isn't directly related to homelessness, but you know, there's, there are a lot of people that aren't that far off from potent, from potentially being at risk of homelessness. So anything we can do to give people a good start is really important. And I think that it all ties together, it all works together. So I'm, I'm very supportive of this, and I know, I'm sure there's some more discussion that needs to be had before the council would make a, a final decision. But I, I think that this is really a great collaborative effort of mayors and people that are wanting to make it affordable to live in our, live and work in the same city. So thank you again, and I look forward to, to further discussion on this.
Thank you, council member Markley.
One quick follow-up on that, Mayor?
Yes, please.
And Marty knows this data better than I do, but there have been national studies, multiple national studies, exactly to your point, council member, that show a direct correlation between increases in rent in a region and increases in homelessness, that there are enough people who are on the edge that when rent increases by not even a substantial degree, but rent increases, there is also a corresponding spike up in homelessness. So the connection there, y, you were right on about.
Yes, thank you. I've actually seen that personally firsthand. So thank you for, for bringing that up, yeah.
Council member Heinz.
Ah, yes, again, thank you for I saw it before, a good chunk of it, and the planning and building committee me. One of the big advantages that I see to this is accessi, accessibility to information. And I, I'd like, I'd like some comments on that. That is, what I see is, is a very tough nut to crack called this, this is one of the biggest deals. I'm, you're not only doing your thing, but you don't control the market. And, and the market can move out from under you or, or prop you up as the, as things go. I would be extremely interested in any plans or thinking relative to initiatives to what we used to refer to as benchmarking. That is, we would see who's doing what, what seems to work, what doesn't seem to work, what items are maybe specific to a certain. what items are maybe specific to a certain, um, uh, community or characteristics of a community that would work in that area. And along that same line, I, I keep thinking to myself, uh, $4,000 or $4,500, uh, at least for an opening, uh, opening shot. When you think of what we would hire a consultant to do what I'm talking about, uh, it might be the biggest bargain in, in Puget Sound. Okay, that is, if we can pool our resources and have access to this type of information. So I'll stop right there. I think you've got the, the, what I'm asking, uh, or the way I'm thinking. Uh, so I, I would appreciate any comments you could offer.
Again, I'll start, but Marty, please chime in here.
Sure.
Great, great comment, council member. And a couple of thoughts about that. Earlier on, when we mentioned the other subregional collaborations, there is a tremendous opportunity to draw on your colleagues in Snohomish, East King County and South King County to ask them what has been working in a collaborative manner in those places and what hasn't worked. In the case of, it, it, back to the benchmarking notion, in the case of East King County, the longest track record, the one that's put the most resources forward for this, they've created through either direct capital contributions to projects or through zoning, uh, code revision work, they've created upwards of 7,000 units. So it's not, you know, 7,000 units is, you could argue is a drop in the bucket in terms of what Pierce County needs or what King County needs, but 7,000 units is, is sizable. So there's a benchmarking opportunity to, to look towards those other regional collaborations to find out what they're doing. Marty, what else would you add?
I, I would just add, that's great, John. I, and what I've observed just in participating in the executive board meetings with the South King County group is they, uh, have a presentation at each of their meetings about what a, a city is doing, what projects have they been doing, what policies have they been passing. Um, and they have outside presentations come in, and there's just a tremendous amount of sharing of great ideas. Uh, one city's doing demonstration projects right now. Another couple of cities have passed some suites of policies. So there's just a lot of value in being able to have a staff person that can coordinate, organize, and share those promising practices, as you say, so that you can gain insights from what others are doing. And of course, they have to be tweaked contextually to your local situation, but at least you're seeing and hearing about things, uh, on this very, very, as you say, complex issue. There's no easy solution.
Thank you.
Mayor, I think we have an answer to the earlier question about the overall size of the budget. Marty was able to look that up.
Yes, it's, uh, around 245,000 for 1.5 FTEs annually.
Thank you. And I want, uh, I believe the amount that we're paying is based on population. Isn't that correct? Yeah.
Correct.
Based on population. And I'd like to see if, uh, uh, Community Development Director Katrina has anything to add.
Found the unmute button. Um, I think a lot of what I was, what I would want to say has been said already by John, Marty, or the mayor, I think, and also Councilmember Heinz. I do think that joining shape and pulling together resources between the cities that are shown on the screen right now, particularly for our city when, where we're smaller staff than most, um, other Pierce County cities allows us to have a focus and continue to work on housing affordability and attainability without having to bring on a full-time, uh, or part-time FTE to be devoted to this. We're able to stay on top of the trends, we're able to pull resources, um, talk with colleagues, and essentially proceed with, uh, housing affordability, attainability work without, again, bringing on that full-time FTE, um, that could, uh, that would cost the city more, uh, money. So I think, um, from the perspective of between 4,000 to 4,500 dollars in order to be a part of this and get that, all of the resources that have been described, I think it's a, a very, uh, a very good deal that the city council should strongly consider.
Thank you. Councilmember Abersole.
Yes, um, my, yeah. Um, how much will affordable transportation, uh, play into this affordable housing discussion? Because the way I see it, uh, we, we talk about building units for home, for people in, in communities when maybe we should be talking about building affordable transportation availability so that someone who lives in, say, Roslyn, Washington can catch a bus or a light rail to Seattle, and we start building outside of mega cities, uh, in populations that, you know, could afford, uh, to have some more people in their populations.
Yeah, great question. Uh, so I have two thoughts. Again, Marty or the mayor may have others. One is that, um, back to the question you asked earlier about advocacy, this group can certainly, um, include in its advocacy agenda at the state or the regional level, transportation policy that has a direct connection to housing issues. So that clearly could be something that the group decided they wanted to take on. The second thing, uh, maybe a little different than, than your question, but I know that some of the other subregional collaborations in South King County and, and East King County are taking a very hard look at what kind of policy should be put in place to take advantage where there is some transit of transit-oriented development opportunities. What does the zoning need to be? What are the programs that need to be available? How do you use something like a multifamily tax exemption or MFTE program in coordination with a transit-oriented development project? Th- those are the kinds of issues that these, the central staff in those places are helping their governments look at and try to put in place.
Yeah. Then if you go, um, we did show that one slide about anticipated growth in the various counties from the Vision 2050 of Puget Sound Regional Council. There's an estimation of 1.8 million, um, people coming to the Puget Sound region between now and 2050. What folks have sort of suggested in that growth pattern is that 65% of those jobs would go near transit and 75% of the population near transit. That means that there's going to have to be a commensurate look at what, as you say, is the transit capabilities and systems. And of course, this was done just a year ago, pre-pandemic. And so now with this notion of what people are calling Zoom towns or the fact that not everybody has to migrate and work directly in large metropolitan areas, uh, employment may look different. Um, so that jobs-housing balance is going to have an impact on transit as well. And to an earlier point from one of the council members, your ability to unify your voice in Pierce County means that you will have even a, a clearer and more capable, uh, influence at the Puget Sound Regional Council table, as well as the state and other decisions being made about transit allocations and housing allocations.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember France is back. Uh, we've, we got your answer, Councilmember France. Everything total, it's about 245,000 for 1.5 and the other expenses. So our 4,000 to 4,500 basically buys us about $245,000 worth of time that our city doesn't have to have to try to do themselves or other cities as well. So you had dropped off when they had found that answer. So I want.
I've, I've been here. I heard it. Thank you.
Okay, um.
Let me, let me just one.
The, uh, yeah, go ahead.
Well, if you're out of time, Mayor, shut me up here.
No, it's okay.
This is related to the budget question and something you said earlier about one vote per member. We've had very explicit conversations with the steering committee. If you look at a budget of 245,000, obviously, based on population, the county and the city of Tacoma are the two big players. So there were, there are questions, and there certainly were at the steering committee about, well, you know, if they're going to contribute the most money, are they going to dominate, uh, all the work? And the mayor of Tacoma and the, both the executive and a council representative from, uh, Pierce County have been very clear that they're, they understand that money that they will be contributing will essentially be used in multiple communities around the county. Um, and that is part of what they think is the power of this collaboration. And to the point ma- the mayor made early on, so far in the development of this interlocal agreement, they have selected the notion that decisions will be made on a one-vote-per-member basis, as opposed to voting based on population or voting based on how much money you contribute. So your vote would count the same as the city of Tacoma's vote, which would count the same as the city of Ordin's vote. So there, there's been a true commitment to trying to structure this in a, a very collaborative way. Sorry, Mayor.
No, no, you're doing great. You know, I've, I've really enjoyed working with John and Marty and, uh, and all the people, all the, all the, um, professors, the educational consultants that have come aboard and, and really given us some knowledge. So thank you very much. So with that, uh, will you have the PowerPoint? Council will be bringing this to you in one of the next council meetings, uh, soon with a interlocal agreement. Is, is it, it's not finalized yet, is it?
W- w- we're within, um,
Yeah.
A hair of a final draft.
That sounds great. Yeah.
Yeah.
Good. So thank you very much, both of you. We really appreciate it. And, um, I'm sure that all of council is very appreciative of listening to what you have to say.
Thank you for letting us take so much of your time this evening.
Thank you. Thank you both.
Bye-bye.
Okay, Mayor's report. Uh, we have a couple of things. Uh, first item that I haven't said is, um, uh, last Saturday, December, uh, February 6th, uh, the Department of Emergency Management provided a mass vaccination for COVID-19. It was the first dose of the Mundana vaccine for 1,000 Pierce County residents. The reservations for this filled up in less than nine minutes on Thursday, the 4th. Uh, my wife and I volunteered along with, uh, many others this, on this event, uh, Saturday at Chapel Hill. We were extremely impressed with how well this event was handled. It went very smooth, and I heard from many citizens how appreciative they were. They were equally as impressed. There is actually a photograph up on the screen right now that actually shows uh, where I was standing, but no, it shows, um, how we got them in and out. Uh, the chief has been very involved with this, along with his officers. There was even a firefighter playing the bagpipes for the whole time, even in the rain. I would like to thank the 37 Department of Emergency Management staff that were on site, the 15 city and county volunteers, the 40 medical contractors and RNs, the two contract security personnel, our Gig Harbor Police Department, and four to five Gig Harbor Fire Department personnel. I would also like to give a special thanks to Chapel Hill for their use of their location. Presently, it's the only location that we found that actually works, uh, getting in and out. We're researching others as well. This, and the huge support of Chapel Hill and their support and their giving to our community. They did, 108 vaccines were used. Just so you know, a vial, when a vial of the vaccine is punctured, it has to be used within six hours. And you get about 10 to 11 doses per vial. So they don't just open them up. They wait, you know, they open it up probably an hour before they have to use it. So it was a huge success, and it is our second one in the community. Uh, and we hopefully, we, we will have other ones as well. Uh, Chief, did you want to add anything to that since you had your officers help out?
Uh, just to say, the final count from Saturday was actually 992 doses, and that was a week after the 700 doses from the Department of Health event. So we do have some others coming up, more in the works that we'll, uh, let you know of as we get closer.
Great. Thank you. Uh, another item I have is, uh, is our Gig Harbor Sister Cities First Step. Now, this is a report given to me by Rotarian Bob Anderson. I really wanted the, the Rotarians have worked on this more, much more than I have, so I wanted them to actually offer their report. So the local sister city initiative was suggested in 2019 by Rotarian President Bob Anderson, Hal Hodgkins, and Rick Hoffner. During the, a meeting with the Mayor Kuhn and Molly Townsley about the idea, Molly noted that as, in 2002, a sister city agreement with the town in Japan ended when the high school teacher who had developed it moved away from Gig Harbor. It is our feeling that a new sister city partnership would be much more likely to endure with involvement of a local Rotarian club, both here and above, both here and abroad. And this is all three of our clubs. While the coronavirus provided a major interruption to our effort, we have been pleased that Mayor Kuhn and the Gig Harbor City Council endorse the partnership. Our initial Board of Directors includes Bob Anderson, a Rotarian Club of Gig Harbor North, Rick Hoffner, a Rotarian Club of Gig Harbor Midday, Chris Pellet, uh, from Rotarian Club of Gig Harbor, Peninsula School Board Member Natalie Wimberly, and Nick Markovich, President of the Gig Harbor Quonos Club. One of our first steps was to join the Sister Cities International, whose network includes more than 2,000 partnerships in more than 140 countries. In deciding where to seek sister cities, we initially focused on working in countries that had played an important part of Gig Harbor's history. To that end, we considered cities in Croatia and Norway, home to many of our earliest European ancestors. Most Gig Harbor Croatians came from the island of Brac. Our first Rotarian contact there was Tonja Pavalkis. So I'm not going to get all these names exact, just so you know. I'm going to do my best. Past president of the Rotarian Club in Sedzka. In addition, we learned through Harbor History Museum of a Tacoma native, Michael Volovich, who lives in Brac. On January 25th, Michael and Tonja assisted us in arranging a Zoom meeting between myself, Mayor Kuhn, and Selka Mayor Ivan. He's got, it's, his last name is really tough, Marcha Vecchetti. Mayor Marcha Vecchetti strongly supports the idea, but asks that we delay signing an official agreement until after his upcoming election. In the meantime, he will seek support of the Selka City Council. This is his third term, so more than likely he'll be mayor again. We are continuing to explore the sister city potential in Norway and look forward to keeping city council members and other interested Gig Harbor citizens informed. Any, uh, any questions by council? Great. Uh, last two things that happened last week. I, Mayor Kuhn testified last week at the State Senate Transportation Committee in support of funding for Highway 16 that runs through our city. We have the potential of receiving over a half a million dollars for on and off ramps connecting to our city streets. It is important to receive these funds if the bills pass. I also spoke to the House Finance Committee in supporting, in supporting funding for our downtown waterfront alliance and Main Street program. Uh, that concludes my report. And with that, it's, uh, City Administrator Report, Bob Lam Arson.
Mayor, members of the council, I'm going to give you an update on the state auditor's data security breach. And, uh, if there's any questions after it, you're certainly welcome to, uh, to ask me those. The city of Gig Harbor is required to have the state auditor conduct annual audits of our financial records. The state auditor uses a third-party service provider, Heselyan, to have, to transmit data files. to transmit data files from us during audit to the auditors, from, during our audit to the auditor's office. Heselyan suffered a security breach in December and informed the auditor's office in mid-January. In turn, the auditor's office informed the city of Gig Harbor on January twenty-eighth of the security breach that allowed unauthorized access to audit records. Some of those records came from our city organization. I want to make clear that this was an attack on the third-party service provider to the state auditor's office and not the city of Gig Harbor. Information from Gig Harbor contained non-personal, financial, and other data that would typically be available for viewing by the public. Our staff has compiled a list of the files we have sent through the file transfer system. As of today, no new information has become known about the state auditor's data security breach concerning our organization. And then based on discussions we've had with our cybersecurity insurer, Risk Management Insurance Agency, and legal counsel assigned by Risk Management Insurance Agency, at this time, there is no need for any further action on our part. If new information is discovered that involves our organization, we'll be in contact with council immediately to discuss it. Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you. With that, we have a staff report. The first one is ITS, our department. Updates from Keith Smith.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I was asked to provide an update on the IT upgrades that were a part of Resolution eleven eighty-three. We have implemented security awareness training for all staff, and I have partnered with our HR department to ensure that this content from AWC, RMSA, is included in our onboarding materials for new staff that join the city. To date, new air conditioning units have been installed in the server room, and roughly thirty-three percent of the city's endpoint devices have been migrated over to the new network infrastructure. The new installation and configuration of wireless access points has been completed here at the Civic Center, and migration of endpoint devices and implementation of software and hardware will continue until everything is completed. In the overall sense, this project is still in progress and is projected to be completed by the end of April twenty twenty-one. And that's all I have for now.
Thank you, Keith. Councilmember Aversold.
Yeah, Keith, I got a question for you. I'm reading about a story that happened, I guess, maybe on Friday down in Florida where someone hacked in and attacked their water supply and raised levels of whatever it was, to dangerous levels where the public could have been poisoned and killed. Are we vulnerable to something like that? And I'm assuming that we are, but what, what steps are we taking with our IT to prevent someone attacking the water system? Maybe that's a question for Jeff as well, or?
I think it would be a question for Jeff unless you want to try to answer that, Keith.
Are you, from our, from our perspective, we have a multi-layered, multi-layered approach to security. So we have several hardware and software technologies that are in place to kind of throw out some of that and also alert to any sort of suspicious behavior and things of that nature. Can't really go into too much detail here, but, but yeah, we have a multi, a multi-layered approach to security in terms of cyber.
And Jeff, do we have, I mean, are we, is our facility online enough that someone could hack in and shut a generator off or cause something to adjust itself so that it explodes or causes problems?
We, our water system is controlled remotely. And so, yeah, the, we have a SCADA system that does that control. Though I think that we have with our vendor enough security in place so that that wouldn't happen. It is independent of the city's own network. It's not tied to it, so not that the city's network isn't secure, but it's just completely separate. So it's not as if someone would be able to know that, to get into that system through the city's network. And we don't control some chlorine levels and those kinds of things with the SCADA system. It's more just well operation and tank levels.
But, but we do go through a third-party vendor?
Yes, we do.
And the state auditor went through a third-party vendor, if I'm not mistaken, as well, correct?
Yeah, that's.
Separate.
Yes, for the day, separate, yes. Third-party vendor sets up our hardware for us. They don't do data transfers for us.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Keith. And our next report is Veterans Play, Veterans Park Playground. Our Public Works Director, Jeff Langham.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I was going to bring up a picture here real quick. I believe in Bob Larson's bi-weekly update, there was a a few pictures of the work that's been completed by our Public Works Operations Staff at the Veterans Park. And so what you see on the screen here is the sidewalks that our crew completed from the left to right. This sidewalk connects both the sidewalk along Fiftieth Street and the sidewalk at the parking lot to both the existing playground equipment, the restrooms, the pavilion, and the new playground equipment. The new playground equipment is just outside of the picture frame, but this is the last stage in finalizing the project. The next steps are to achieve certificate of occupancy. We have to call in that request. I know our inspector has done that already, so hopefully we can get that inspection and get that written or signed off this week. After we have a certificate of occupancy provided for this project, then we will have a soft opening. We'll take the fences down, allow people to use the facilities. And then we are currently coordinating for a virtual ribbon cutting for it to happen later in February. We need to coordinate with the students from Discovery Elementary who participated in the design and the selection of the playground equipment. So I know the mayor and Laura Pettit are working on that virtual ribbon cutting.
Great, thank you. We'll reach out to staff. We'll reach out. I, I looked at the guidelines on how many people can be together. We'll reach out to council to be a part of that as well.
Okay.
Thank you. Do you want to mention the plant, I know it was in the weekly report, but the Burnham Planting?
Oh, sure. The city has three different projects for planting native plants in and around Burnham Drive, Harbor Hill Drive. The contract that was awarded, I think it was awarded the very first meeting in January, is for a landscape contractor to come in and place native plants along Harbor Hill Drive to the west side of, between Harbor Hill Drive and the McCormick Creek Phase Three Project, and also around the parcel and that is the stormwater pond for Harbor Hill Drive. There's one more phase of this project that we're going to complete hopefully this fall, but that work is moving along swiftly. We've got all the plants in hand, the contractors placing those plants, and they're supposed to be out, done and out of there by the end of this month.
As you know, it's been kind of a bare area up there at the Storm Pond, the Roundabout, near the Sportsman Club, and so I'm very excited to have the planning going in. So that's, that's great. Thank you, Jeff. We've got a community vaccination report to add to from Chief Bucy.
Not much more than we talked about for the vaccination clinics, Mayor. Countywide, though, I can say that we've had seventy-seven thousand people vaccinated out of what a county of about seven hundred thousand. So again, the best to say is that we're still in Phase One-B, Tier One. Hopefully, we'll get to Tier Two very soon. That includes teachers and some other categories. But more vaccination clinics as more supply becomes available to us here in the county.
Thank you. Yeah, I was on a meeting with mayors and the Health Department was talking on the Thursday. We're doing about thirty-one hundred vaccinations a day in Pierce County as of Thursday, and only eight percent of Pierce County had been vaccinated. So I think there's a, they said there's a shortage, but they're hoping to get way more than they've planned, too.
Right. They've been getting about a third of what they request, but the average daily doses administered is going up very steadily.
Great, great. Okay, we've got any items, any public comment on non-agenda items, Bob?
Mayor, there are no public comments on items not on the agenda.
Thank you. No business tonight, so our first new business item is Resolution eleven ninety-eight.
Mayor, were you going to open it up for people on the phone?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you very much, yeah. So I see anyone from the public that wishes to comment. Please, please do so. We don't have a lot of attendees I can see, but you can, you can push star nine on your phone, and that will, that will raise your hand button. So I'll give it a mine. So I'm opening up to callers that are on the phone or on their computer. Okay, I don't see anyone. I'll close the public comment. Thank you, Daniel. Our first item, new business is Resolution eleven ninety-eight. Our official newspaper report would be from our Assistant City Clerk, Josh Decker. Take it away.
Good evening, council. By state law, every city is required to have an official newspaper that they adopt by resolution. And by our city code, every two years, we're required to go out to bid, to look for bids from eligible newspapers to see what rates we can get for advertising. Here in Gig Harbor, we only have two newspapers that meet the qualifications, and they're both owned by the McClatchy Group. It's either the Gateway or the Tacoma News Tribune. So last month, we sent out our request for proposals, and we specifically asked McClatchy to give us a proposal from both the News Tribune and the Gateway. And they came back to us with really similar rates for each paper. I think it was just about a dollar and a half cheaper for the News Tribune as opposed to the Gateway. At this time, staff is recommending that we change our official newspaper from the Gateway, which is what we've used for many years, to the Tacoma News Tribune. And there's a few reasons for that. The first and probably the most important is flexibility. With the Gateway, we only have the option to publish on Thursday. And the Gateway has a much longer lead time for advertising. We have to notify them almost a week before the publication date. So if we have an event or an issue that comes up where we need to hold a public hearing or get public notice in the newspaper, we have sometimes in the past run into a situation where we've had to delay action by a couple of weeks because we can't get it into the newspaper in time for the council meeting. We're looking at a lead time of between eighteen and twenty-one days sometimes, and sometimes that's just not enough to do that. If we were able to use the Tacoma News Tribune, because it publishes daily and has a shorter notification time to get advertisements in, we can shorten that by up to almost ten days, which really gives us a lot more flexibility as staff to be able to be more responsive when we need to get something in the paper. Most of the time when we have a public hearing or a public notice, we know it's coming. Like with the budget, we know, we know when those are going to be, and we can plan ahead, and that's not an issue for the Gateway. But sometimes we have things come up where, where it can be a problem. The Gateway is also doing a technical change that's going to make our lives a little more difficult. They're now requiring that all of their legal notices be, they're supposed to be formatted display ads, so like an advertisement like you would normally put in a paper outside of a classified where you have to actually format it with a border and make sure all the text is aligned properly. That's going to add some extra work to staff to have to prepare those. With the Tacoma News Tribune, we can still do the format where we just give them text and they format it to fit into their classified section. So that's something we want to consider, too. And then the other issue is expanded reach. We asked the Tacoma News Tribune to give us a kind of a rundown of what the distribution is for both papers. On this side of Tacoma Narrows Bridge, the Gateway's distribution is, let me just double check, it's just over seventeen hundred, seventeen ninety-three. And on this side of the bridge, including the greater Gig Harbor, Key Peninsula area, not including Kitsap County, the Tacoma News Tribune daily subscribers is just under that number. It's at one thousand seven hundred and sixty-nine. So you have about a fifty-fifty split between people that are getting the Gateway on Thursday and people that are getting the Gateway or getting the News Tribune every day of the week. So you can go either way on those. The advantage, though, is that when you advertise in the News Tribune, you're also reaching the seventeen thousand people in Pierce County that are getting the Tacoma News Tribune. And a lot of our notices are things like requests for proposals or requests for bids, and that is to our advantage if we can reach more people throughout Pierce County. So having gone through all that, that's staff's recommendation. I'm open to any questions and discussion.
Thank you for that in-depth report. That was a lot of good statistics. Councilmember Himes.
Ah, yeah. To the best of mine, I, I know the Tribune has an electronic version. I'm not aware of an electronic version of the Gateway. Is that correct?
So for classified advertisements?
It comes out on Wednesday. Sorry, go ahead, Josh.
The classified advertisements for both papers go into the same system. So if you went on to either the Gateway Online or the Tacoma News Tribune Online and went to the classifieds, it would take you to the same place. So it doesn't matter which paper we advertise in that way. It's going to look the same online.
Right. Thank you. That answers my question.
Councilmember Aversold.
Yeah, Josh, I'm sorry. Did you say that the Gateway only has seventeen hundred subscribers in Gig Harbor?
Seventeen hundred total everywhere. So I think there are some Gateway subscribers and on the other side of the bridge and some in Kitsap County. That's seventeen hundred for the whole, everywhere that's subscribed to it.
And that includes our snowbirds somewhere else, too. Councilmember Frantich.
Yes, you hit, I guess, kind of Councilmember Aversold's question, similar to mine. You don't have a circulation breakdown by zip code?
Not by zip code for the Tacoma News Tribune, no. They were able to give me a searchable map, but the map sections were broader than by zip code. I was able to narrow it down to Pierce County on the other, on this side of the bridge. So that's where that number comes in. So that's all, all of the Pierce County distribution on this side of the Tacoma Narrows Bridge, but it does not include anything in Kitsap County.
So you, you don't really know whether that seventeen hundred and change number is mostly in the city limits or it's just that that number represents all of Pierce County on this side of the bridge?
Yes, yeah.
Thank you. I will open up the public comment. Was there any handwritten comments?
Mayor, we did not receive any written comments on this item.
Thank you. I'll open up the public comment for anyone that's calling in or on their computer. Okay, I don't see anyone from that. I will close the public comment. A council deliberation and action. Councilmember Woo.
Yes, so I would move that we select as our paper of record the Tacoma News Tribune.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Markley, second it.
Just to clarify, is that passing the resolution as attached as eleven ninety-eight?
Yes, I would move to approve a resolution eleven ninety-eight.
Thank you.
Any other deliberation? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Absent? Motion passes, seven zero. Thank you. And I'm sure staff.
Mayor, can I make one more comment before we move on?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
One, one thing I wanted to ask council about. The Gig Harbor Municipal Code has a provision in there where we are required to go out for bids for the newspaper every two years. The state only requires us to adopt the official newspaper by resolution. Most cities have a resolution that they've adopted decades ago where they just leave it in place. If councils interested or willing, we could come back with an ordinance resolution that would make it so that we're not required to go out for bid every two years since we know that there's only limited options here in Gig Harbor. It may not be necessary to go to that expense or that trouble. limited options here in Gig Harbor. It may not be necessary to go to that expense or that trouble. I thought something council is interested in seeing.
Well, go ahead, Spencer.
I believe there will be another option in the near future, and so I'd like to keep that option available for myself, or not for myself, but that's my opinion.
Councilmember Frannage.
I had to get unmuted there. Yeah, I, you know, I was a little uncomfortable. I voted for it. You know, we've used the Gateway forever. Since the circulation numbers were the same, I wish we would add a little more specific information on in-city, but at least this first two-year period, I think that we need to revisit this in two years to make sure that we're doing the citizens the right justice.
Sounds good. I saw another nod and it's important. So two years, we'll, we'll leave it at that. Thank you. Our second item is first reading of ordinance adopting Ansich Park Dock Rules. Report, Public Works Director Jeff Langhelm.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, you have for you tonight, the first reading of an ordinance that would establish specialized dock rules. And this would provide a mechanism for enforcement of these rules because they're not currently covered. These facilities are not currently covered by existing parks rules that are established under Municipal Code nine point twenty-four, the municipal code. The ordinance, I'll share my screen. It's just a cover of the ordinance itself. Got something else to show after this. The ordinance is similar to existing rules that are already in place at both the city's maritime pier and the city's Jerisich Dock.
Is there any way to make that a little larger or a little clearer? I'm sorry to interrupt you. Thank you.
No, okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. I guess it's for us to see over here.
Okay. So as we know, both Maritime Pier and Jerisich Dock are already routinely used by the commercial fishing operators and the Gig Harbor Canoe and Kayak Race Team. And so, but the main difference, the ordinance that you have before you tonight is that this ordinance provides rules for the facilities that are actually located at Ansich Waterfront Park. This includes the overwater structures, sorry, overwater structures that are in Ansich Waterfront Park. This includes the Ansich Pier, the Ansich Net Shed and the Jerkovich Pier. And when I say Jerkovich Pier, I mean just the fixed pier on the Jerkovich side. So from the bulkhead, that water's edge, out to the gate located on the pier that goes down to the Jerkovich float system. And when we put this ordinance together, we receive direction from both the city's insurance carrier, RMSA, and state permitting agencies. And so that's, that's key to remember as we go through all of this. So once these rules for the Ansich docks is what they've been termed here, have been adopted, the city may then begin working with operators of commercial fishing vessels on the use authorizations necessary to actually for them to use the Ansich docks. The city wants to have the ordinance and the rules in place so that commercial fishing operators can begin using the pier and the net shed now in participation or in preparation for their departure to fish later this spring. And it's important to note that as future phases of Ansich Waterfront Park are completed, and specifically I'm talking about the Community Paddler's Dock and the Commercial Fishing Home Port Dock, these rules and that are adopted by this ordinance and any future leases that we might have or use authorizations from any future members would need to be adjusted to accommodate those future facilities. One definition I have to provide here that it's not clearly identified in, or it's not identified in this ordinance, and maybe it needs to be, if there's some confusion, is the definition of the word dock. So the use of the word dock was very intentional here in this ordinance because the word dock includes both the city's facilities that are fixed over the water. Those are called piers, and it includes the facilities that float on top of the water or floats. And you've heard me use those terms. It might seem interchangeably, but I try to be very consistent when I use those terms. And so I wanted to be very clear that the docks are, the term docks is intended to include both the piers and the structures over the water that are fixed and in the future, the floats that might be on the water. And so that would accommodate both the future Community Paddler's Dock and the Commercial Fishing Home Port Dock. So the concerns that I've heard so far from commercial fishing operators are, have been primarily associated with the use authorizations. And the use authorizations were included in this packet for reference because there might have been a question of what use authorizations look like and why it's kept being referenced in this code. The intent of this code and the reference, those use authorizations is to provide the ability to be flexible in the future. Those use authorizations are not being proposed as part of this ordinance to be adopted. So that because at some point, the approach the commercial fishermen might take, might need to change, the city administration might have a different approach that they want to take with commercial fishermen. And to revise those use authorizations, if they are adopted as part of the ordinance, would take another ordinance to change those use authorizations. So in order to maintain as much flexibility as we can, we are proposing to not adopt the use authorizations as part of this. Also, it will take more time to adopt this ordinance and to get the fishermen in the net shed and on the pier if we adopt them consecutively. So that was intentional, but it's not, absolutely not the only way that we need to be talking about or the only way we need to approach this. Just for reference, I've got this image here if we want to talk about it in a minute. I did review the proposal that was provided earlier today from Guy Hoppin. I am available and ready to talk about that if the council wants to. I can say that much of the concerns the commercial fishermen have that I've heard and saw in today's, today's proposal from the commercial fishermen. A lot of those are very limited in scope that we can adjust because of the input that we've received from both RMSA and the state agencies. So I'm, that's the end of my presentation. I'm ready to take questions or go further if council wants to go further.
Let's dive in to clear, questions from council, clarifying questions from council. Councilmember Heinz.
Yeah, on, on the issue of docks, covering docks and piers, paddlers and fishermen on two separate piers and two separate sets of docks. You mentioned putting everything into one big package and that gives you room for growth. I guess that's as these things evolve. From a utilization standpoint, is that consistent with the way people actually look for information or try to provide things? What I'm thinking is, you know, if I'm a, if I'm a fisherman, I could care less about the paddler's dock if it's all buried in the same document, okay? Under a certain thing. And it, when I was reading through it, it, it felt clunky. Let me just put it that way. It's like, what have I got all this stuff in here for? When I don't even have the information yet, number one, a lot of it. And two, even if I had the information, do I really care about the paddler's dock on fishermen and vice versa? So I, I, I guess I'd be interested. Did you try this on a user? All that they, the paddler people say, yeah, I want to be combined with the, with the net shed and the fishermen. Has any thought been given to that?
Yes, a lot of thought was given to that. The intent of the ordinance wasn't to necessarily establish what those future use authorizations might be for the float systems. Well, that's, again, the ordinance as written has no impact on the, the human powered craft for this facility because the human powered craft don't have an overwater structure to access. So really, it's just all for, for commercial fishing purposes right now. And the Jerkovich Pier, while it's very limited in commercial fishing uses, it, it, the parking on that does allow for commercial fishing. And so that's included, but the intent was to try and reduce confusion for everybody, commercial fishing, the general public team, by having one ordinance that establishes rules for one park. If we start to separate it, we can. We just have to be very clear about what we're talking about. But that's why in the future, let's say we have the Community Paddler's Dock completed and we revisit this topic in, and very end of this year, then we'll add a new section on there that has a different type of use authorization for community paddlers or for or for the team or whomever. Or just a specific section, just to talk about the general public, because we're not gonna have a use authorization for the general public. We're just gonna have that for specific user groups that may want to be down there. So, and regarding input, at the onset of this, I did not go out and request input on this. Instead, I heard that what was being done at Maritime Pier was acceptable. And so we have a use authorization for Maritime Pier. I took that into account and started with that. And then I used the existing code for Maritime Pier, which is eight point twenty-nine, chapter eight point two-nine, and also the existing code for Jerisich Dock, which is chapter eight point twenty-eight. And understanding that those fit the needs of the user groups, I then said to, based on input from RMSA and the state permitting agencies, I tried to incorporate what they are telling me we should be including. A lot of these comments from state agencies had to do with minimizing impacts to overwater coverage. And a lot of the comments from RMSA were directly related to indemnity, reducing liability, and so, and looking at this as a way for commercial fishermen to access the water and in the net shed to repair nets. And so there, as I said, there's been some comments that I've heard from and even in Guy Hoppin's present proposal that I think could definitely be addressed, but I'm not, again, I don't, I don't know if the council wants to go through those.
I guess, the other question I had in prior discussions, the, the issue of safety came up quite a bit. Called for people, public and/or at that time, paddlers, when we were considering that alternative of a shared dock over there. And I noticed there wasn't much in there relating to safety. It was, it was related to whose fault it was, but it didn't, it didn't say do this or do that or, you know, it talked about, yeah, you don't leave vehicles running on there because bad things could happen, you know. I was just interested in that. And by the way, the reason I'm interested is I went and I actually measured that saw again. The distance from the rail over to the net shed, it varies from nine to ten feet along that section. And that doesn't leave much clearance, particularly with trucks with outside rearview mirrors on them. You're getting dangerously close. Is, is there any thought to, to that in this or in, say, in future versions of this, that there should be some things in there? I, I can easily see, for example, requiring people to put pylons out and just saying, hey, we got a truck coming in here and for ten minutes or whatever, you're gonna have to suspend operations, okay? As far as tourists or whoever walking through that area.
Yes, the, the approach to safety was provided through the, again, through the use authorizations and the operators would be the ones required to, because, because only someone who has a use authorization would be opening the net shed and only someone who has a use authorization would be driving down onto the site with a truck. They're the ones who, by operating there, are going to be providing that level of safety that they deem desired. I have heard both now and in the past that the fishermen really think that they can approach this the best, in the best manner possible. And depending on site circumstances, whether there's nobody there or a lot of people there, they think that they, they can do that safest by their own measures. So trying to give them the flexibility. But again, those types of specifics are outlined in the use authorizations, which are not part of this ordinance.
Councilmember Frannage.
Yeah. Well, I, I think that, I really think that this should have gone to a work-study session or to a committee where we could have had some fishermen at the table while we were putting this together because I, I, I think that there's a lot of language in here that needs to be amended. And I'm always very uncomfortable trying to amend an ordinance to this large extent that I believe needs to happen in this document the night of a council meeting. So I would like to table this and move this to a work-study session where we could get some commercial fishermen to participate at the meeting so we could go through this and get it right the first time rather than trying to on the fly amend this tonight because this is the first reading and then at the next meeting pass this. I, I think that this needs to have some, some serious input from the commercial fishing members, so.
And I would second that if that's a motion.
That is a motion.
Second.
Okay, so Councilmember Frannage, would you, would you amend your motion to postpone as opposed to tabling? Because tabling means it has to come back at the next council meeting. And to give this adequate time, as I think council is wanting with the fishermen, it would be better to make sure we get, we get the fishermen within the next two to four weeks, but we don't have to rush it.
Yeah, I, I amended to use the word postpone.
And I second that.
Okay. We're still.
I, I have one more question for Jeff, Mayor.
Yeah, we'll still let other councils have comments too. Go ahead, go ahead, Councilmember Frannage.
So right now, Jeff, you know, I know there's a use authorization for the Maritime Pier and there are certain requirements. The fishermen need to have, to get the key to the ballards. Right now, if a commercial fisherman wanted to come up to the, the Ansich site, could they do it or are we not allowing them at this point in time?
Technically, they don't have authorization. They don't have, the key that's used for the ballards in the net shed is not the same key that's used at Maritime Pier.
Okay, well, then I could see that we would want to schedule this work-study session or, you know, send it to the Public Works Committee, a committee or an ad hoc committee sooner rather than later because, you know, over the course of the next several months is when the commercial fishermen are more apt to need, need the space. several months is when the commercial fishermen are more apt to need need the space.
Okay, great. Other council comments? Okay. All right. I don't see any reason to open a public comment because we're we have a motion actually, and if the motion dies, we'll open a public comment. But otherwise, we're going to be talking about it with the public as well. So there's a motion to postpone this to do a a work, I I believe a work study session with council and some fishermen. There's a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Those abstain? Okay, motion passes to I appreciate council. I I would I would hate to go through an hour or two of this and then have us just kill this at the second reading. It would be kind of a waste of all of our time. So I think it's appropriate to do what you did and we'll set up a work study session that involves all of us as well as fishermen. And but we'll make sure that as Jeff pointed out, that we're going to have other agreements down the road that are are for the dock and for the other things. So we want to make sure that we keep it with the type of use that we're going with each one because it will be amended. Uh, councilmember Franch.
Yes, I I would like to make sure that we we get some sort of I I I know we have a work study session this week and, you know, it's a we need to get notice out to the fishermen's representatives to get this done, but I would really appreciate it if we could get this maybe the following week so we it doesn't fall through the cracks.
Sure, sure. I I agree. We want to make it while they're here and address the the letter that came in today by God from Guy. We all know that you can't get in and out in 15 minutes with your boat and they're going to need longer. But again, there's different uses. So we don't want to all tie it into one because it will be separate. So sure, I agree. I think we're all shooting out for the same thing.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our third item is the first reading of three ordinances. Mobility devices amending GHMC, chapter eight point three oh and chapter nine point two four and repealing chapter 10 point two four. The report is by Chief Kelly Bucy.
Okay, me again, Mayor and Council. Give me a second while I share my screen.
I also would like to I appreciate council letting us go through the the agenda on new business two, you know, instead of pulling it, let us talk about it a little bit as we did. I think that was the appropriate way of doing it. So thank you.
Okay, if somebody can give me a thumbs up that they can see my screen. Okay, thank you, councilmember. So tonight you're being asked to consider three actions in the form of ordinances. And I'll just give you one brief presentation that covers all three. Basically, we are going to amend two parts of the municipal code and then repeal a third. And all of this surrounds the mobility devices we've turned it. These are some of the newer technologies and devices that we see that transport people around on wheeled devices. So first, let's talk about one of the first components, a motorized foot scooter, which by RCW definition is a device like you see in the picture. There has two or three wheels, handlebars, a floorboard that they can stand on. But the key is that it's powered by an internal combustion engine or an electric motor. So we've seen these for years. They may have peaked in popularity in favor of some other things, but they're still out and about. So we needed to come up with some ways to regulate these mostly for safety and pedestrian safety. So first of all, state law says the following that that these cannot be driven on sidewalks, but by local ordinance, we can allow that to happen, not necessarily recommending that. That's just what is available. They can be driven on the street, much like a bicycle. They can be used on only parts of our Cushman Trail. As I understand it, we have some of the Cushman Trail paid for with federal dollars and there was a disqualifying circumstance there. But we can otherwise restrict these on certain parts of the road or on other parts of rights of way. So as we look at the proposed ordinance that you've had, the section dealing with motorized foot scooters, we're gonna after going through committee and 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 looking at the draft ordinance here. I think it's important we delineate that we cannot operate a motorized foot scooter on a sidewalk on the Cushman Trail within the boundaries of the Gig Harbor Sports Complex. These things move at a little bit faster clip than some of the other things, up to 20 miles an hour. On North Harborview, Harborview and Olympic Drive outside of the existing bicycle lanes. So again, they can operate within the bike lanes. Or on any roadway with a posted speed limit of greater than 35 miles per hour. Have to obey all the traffic control signs and yield to motor vehicles and pedestrians. One unique thing that came up in our committee discussion is how would they transit a roundabout? And we thought that they should stop, pick the device up and carry it using a crosswalk to avoid any conflict within a roundabout. And certainly not using them after dark. That would be a little dangerous too. So those are what we came up with for motorized foot scooters and partially what's included in your draft ordinance is there. The other part concerns what we'll call electric personal assistive mobility devices. And these again are defined in RCW. So the acronym EPAMD, usually like the segways and the hoverboards and those sorts of things, or the self balancing one wheel device that's actually gaining a lot of traction. These things move at a bit of a scary clip. I remember talking to one user kind of a 20 something year old that was using one. And he told me that they top out about 16 miles an hour, which in his own opinion was way too fast. So that they are gaining in popularity and and we're seeing them in various iterations. I want to point out at this point that nothing we talk about tonight has anything to do with disability devices, power wheelchairs, anything like that, totally separate part of the RCW. So state law with these EPAMDs say that they shall yield right away to all the pedestrians. And if they're coming upon a pedestrian, they should give an audible signal, hey, coming behind you or something like that. But other than that, they behave and have all the rights and duties of a pedestrian. The municipalities can prohibit operation on some public roads where the speed limit is greater than 25 miles an hour. And we can further restrict the speed of EPAMD where there's a lot of congestion. And I know that the genesis of this whole conversation came about the use of these devices on Harborview Drive mainly and the congestion and the interaction that they have with pedestrians there. What we can't do is make a blanket policy or ordinance that restricts the speed of an EPAMD all over the city. And then we can also regulate them in, you know, recreational areas, trails, the the sports complex, things like that. So within the same ordinance here in chapter eight point three of the municipal code, we've suggested that no person shall operate an EPAMD on a roadway with a posted speed limit greater than 25 miles an hour. They shall not operate an EPAMD at a speed of greater than 10 miles per hour on Harborview Drive. Now, are we going to be out there with radar guns writing tickets to 14 year olds on these one wheeled devices? We're not going to do that. But if we see something that's really out of bounds going on, figure a parade day or something like that where somebody is just not operating correctly or safely, we can factor that in and hopefully the officer can articulate an approximate speed that they were moving. In this section here, this is a correction I'll need to bring back on the second reading. Paragraph C should not exist here. This this is a carryover from the motorized foot scooter order. So the next next I bring to you next reading would be without that specific sentence in it. The penalties for violating these, we have to change this to $100. I think the existing reference is $50. By by code, we can't charge $50 for an infraction. It's got to be $100. $500 or $5,000. Those are only three options. However, we're not going to be writing $100 tickets to 14 year old kids on one wheeled devices. If something happens that there was a violation that resulted in enforcement, the court could issue authorize them to provide eight hours of community service in lieu of that fine. Now, throughout looking at this municipal code here got really fragmented. And so what I propose is that we take these three codes, eight point three oh, nine point two four and 10 point two four and kind of consolidate them. And here's what I mean. A lot of their redundant information like motor vehicles in skate parks versus motor vehicles in parks, smoking and alcohol in parks appeared in two different sections of our code. So we're going to strike 10 point two four and transfer that information hopefully to the other two sections, starting first with the title adding in the mobility device of the motorized foot scooters and EPAMDs. But you can see that a lot of these other sections fit within our parks code. So we've drawn motorized vehicles from the other two sections and hours of use and pull them all into the park section just to make it easier for the public to find the parks rules all in one place. And then, of course, we added the two sections that deal with the motorized foot scooters and the EPAMDs as we just talked about. A few other things. Within the parks code, it was a suggestion that came out of the Finance and Safety Committee that we restrict the ability for someone to use an internal combustion gasoline engine inside a city park, except for the parking lot areas. That's just more of a noise ordinance, sort of a thing that somebody enjoying the park doesn't want to have somebody buzzing around with a gas engine all day on their in their park. And then parks operating hours were a bit fragmented. So we brought them all together. All the parks except Jerisich Dock, because people need access to their boats 24 hours, shall be closed from dusk to dawn. And then in conversation with councilmember Franch, I think we deduced a good addition to bring back on second reading is to add closed at dark unless operating under the authority of a special event or special use permit for things like pier into the night or movies in the park or something like that. We should obviously remain flexible to accommodate those things too. So that's what I have on the ordinances. Those are the bullet point highlights. I'll gladly entertain some questions from council at this point. Okay, back to you here.
Great, councilmember Franch.
You're muted there, councilmember Franch.
Thank you. In looking at these different sections here, eight point three oh point oh four oh, where we're talking about the motorized foot scooters. And we're talking about not allowing those on the sidewalks. But we're allowing the motorized skateboard type the EPAMD.
Correct. That's largely dictated by state law. State law indicates that, you know, that as defined in my presentation there, the different abilities for those things. And state law says motorized foot scooters are specifically restricted from the sidewalk. Unless council allows them, there is no such provision in the EPAMD. So those are basically allowed on sidewalks and 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 state law goes on to talk about dealing with pedestrians and things like that.
Well, can we? We've got a under O five O B, we have a no person shall operate those at a speed greater than 10 miles per hour on Harborview Drive. Can we limit the speed limit on the sidewalks?
And in fact, that is the intent. Again, because these things aren't street legal, if you will, no person shall operate the EPA and via the speed greater than 10 miles an hour on Harborview Drive. We could say we we make that say on the sidewalks adjacent Harborview Drive if that adds some clarity.
Well, I I think that that would, you know, I mean, my whole the whole reason why even I brought this up last year was you know, with the proliferation of these going on is conflicts with pedestrians. And, you know, on side streets, we don't, you know, we don't have a lot of pedestrians, but on Harborview Drive we do. So I I would like to see language added that we do control the speed limit since we're to 10 miles per hour.
Okay, when I'm hearing you say specifically to make that applicable to the sidewalk.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can certainly add that for the second reading, you bet.
Are you saying just one, just Harvey view sidewalk or?
Well, I mean,
what do we do on Soundview Drive?
Under O five O B, we're talking about no person shall operate an EPAMD at a speed greater than 10 miles per hour on Harborview Drive, which is the which I'm assuming he's meaning the street. It would just seem prudent to me to have them not going any faster than 10 miles per hour on the sidewalk.
Right. I think that was actually the intent. And Mayor, I heard your question in there too. The state law says that we can restrict the speed limit where there's a congestion of pedestrians or a greater interaction pedestrians versus these devices.
Right, because if I understand councilmember Franch's concern, and I would have the same concern like going down Soundview. You know, it's it's not, a lot of people walk on Soundview and someone comes down there at a greater speed than 10. That's pretty dangerous. So I kind of think maybe is it is it unrealistic to do no greater speed than Tim on 10 miles an hour on any major street or a major site, a major sidewalk?
Again, if I I'd have to bring my presentation back up to share it with you, but we can't just make a blanket statement like that as far throughout the whole city. It's let me pull up that section at least so I can.
Okay, well, maybe we should do Harborview, Soundview, you know, the streets that they can go pretty fast going downhill.
Mayor, how about if we if we, and I don't know it off the top of my head, but you know, if we look into the roadway classifications, you know, I I don't have a problem on side streets, you know, but you know, I I to tell you the truth, and I probably should know. I don't know if Harborview Drive and Soundview Drive are arterials or major roadways, maybe Mr. Langham can enlighten us on what the more heavily traveled roads are classified as.
I'm sure Kelly would know that too, being a police department.
Well, I don't know about classifications of roadways. I can direct you back to the state law that I was trying to cite earlier where it says a municipality may restrict the speed of an EPAMD in locations with congested pedestrians or non motorized traffic and where there is a significant speed differential between those two. So maybe I'd have to chat with Daniel about what we could and how broadly we could apply that.
Well, I mean, Jeff, can you see, you know, our our streets that go down, you know, Pioneer, Stinson, Soundview and a Harborview. I can see a problem with that on those, and that's not a blanket. And then Peacock. Before you know, they have sidewalks in Burnham. Yes, councilmember Roberts sold. He might have a solution.
Yeah, too quick. Well, my solution to that is anything with a grade steeper than 6% or 7% or whatever. I don't know what grades are steep, but I think that would cover it because then there's not many streets that have huge grades in them of elevation.
But for my drive has no grade.
Yeah.
Yeah, we would just include that one then.
Plus as an enforcement action, that would be virtually impossible for an officer to know the grade of every road in the city.
Well, and here's my original question is, is this, how do we enforce this? I mean, who's going to be out with radar guns checking to see if kids on E pads are going 10 miles per hour or citizens saying, well, he was going 11 miles per hour and he rammed into us. How do they know?
Right, this is going to be likely only surfacing in in two situations I can think of. One would be a very chronic offender, somebody that likes to make sport of harassing pedestrians. Or secondly, a large crowd, say the Maritime Gig or National Night Out that's assembled and somebody operating pretty recklessly in there. That's that's generally when those will come up. If there's an accident, we may also apply the the ordinance if there's if somebody if a pedestrian gets injured, say, by one of these things.
It will happen too. I've I've watched these fly down Sound Soundview actually on the sidewalk. So.
So I my direction is to add the sidewalks for North for Harborview Drive. But are we also adding then Harborview, the sidewalks of Harborview and Soundview? Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, I I would like, you know, maybe if Jeff, I see he was on there for a second, if he could talk about what the the classifications of Soundview, Harborview, Peacock, Stinson are if they're all the same classification.
I'd have to double check by looking at the map, which I'm in the process of bringing up, but most of those are considered arterial roadways. Some of them are collector roadways, but we we do, I could bring that up if you want to wait a few minutes, otherwise I can work with Kelly and report back.
Yeah, I don't I don't want to belabor it, but but I I I don't know. Well, I see councilmember Denson has her hand up, so I I don't know what the rest of the council feels on this, but. but I think on the roads that these, the arterials in these major roadways, there does need to be some speed limits, so anyway.
Councilmember Denson.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I absolutely understand limiting the speed limit on Harborview Drive. I mean, I barely, I barely even run on that road anymore. There's so many people on the sidewalk. I, and I definitely understand that that fits with state law because I would say that's a congested sidewalk for sure. I really don't like the idea of limiting it so much on these other roads, Soundview and Pioneer and Peacock, because I think we have to remember it's already in code that these folks have to yield to pedestrians. And with those streets, although there are some people on the sidewalk, it's not congested in my opinion, and there's plenty of room for these folks that are on the electronic skateboards or whatever to slow down, to get off. I mean, I see them doing that all the time. And I think at a certain point, we need to trust our citizens to do the right thing. And I, I see them doing that now. And obviously, they could be cited if they are driving recklessly or riding recklessly and that, and if they're not yielding to pedestrians, and they should be cited for that. So I feel like it's a bit of overreach. They go beyond North Harborview Drive at this point because I think that that's the one that, that definitely there just isn't room to go too fast with all the pedestrians. That would be my vote, thanks.
Sure. It is something we can always add streets if we feel there's problems too. Okay, so I, I have seen a problem on Soundview. So maybe, how does council, council feel on Harborview and Soundview? Councilmember Woo.
Aren't Soundview and Pioneer and Peacock and, aren't those parkways?
Technically, they're all arterial roadways. They're, everything's, almost everything in downtown for those roadways that we're referring to are considered minor arterial roadways. And I have a map up if you'd like to see if that helps, but almost all of these larger roadways are arterial roadways.
Okay. How would council feel if we put Harborview and Soundview left at that? Councilmember Denson and then attorney.
I think I could compromise on that, especially since I doubt they're gonna be going that fast down that road because, you know, it's dangerous, it is steep.
Okay, Daniel.
I just wanted to quickly point out, and I think Chief, you brought this up, but the RCW does require the city engineer to make the designation. And so if we're proposing them here in this group, if council's proposing them, I would just want to make sure that Jeff, whoever would fill that role, Trent, yeah, has an opportunity to review those requests from council and can sign off on that just because this specifically calls out the city engineer approving that. But obviously gathering the input is wonderful, and then we can just get that to Trent to look over.
Okay, all right. So I see some support on Harborview and Soundview. Let's see if there's any, is there any public comment? I will open up the public comment right now. Are there any public comments as far as written?
Mayor, there are no written comments that have been submitted on this.
Okay, I'm gonna open up for the people that have, are listening. Anyone from the public wish to raise their hand? Okay, I'll close the public comment on that. Councilmember Franch. Oh, you're on mute again.
My vote would be to have any sidewalk that's adjacent to an arterial, so for what it's worth.
Well, I would, I would add to that though, Councilmember Franch, that's gonna be really hard to enforce then. I mean, I, none of the officers, including myself, know what arterial roadways are. So that's, how would we expect the public to know that if the officers don't even know?
Well, I mean, I don't know, are we gonna be putting signs on Soundview and Harborview? I don't know what the mechanism that is the second step after this ordinance. What did you have planned?
Just maybe an education campaign if we see the violations.
Well.
Okay, Councilmember Merkley.
Oh yes, thank you. So I would support Harborview and Soundview as a starting point. And then if we see major issues developing on other roads, we can, you know, talk about those and see if we might need to add more. But I think kind of having Harborview and Soundview as sort of a trial run of this might be a good thing as a start.
Sounds great. And again, I've seen this on Soundview quite a bit, and a lot of people walk it too. So, okay, so we'll start with Chief, if you would do it for Harborview and Soundview, and we'll take it with that, and then we'll come back for a second reading.
As amended, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Merkley. Council reports, council comments. We have a planning and building committee was February 1st, Councilmember Hines.
Yeah, we met on February 1st and we covered the, what I would call the residential planning framework at the county and in the regional level that we have to operate within for setting population planning targets. These would be either Vision 2050 or GMA. In support of that, we also talked about the supporting things that we have to get done. And that is buildable lands report, UGA annexation study, and basically come up with some initial population targets that we could actually meet as part of these visioning processes. Also, we got some of those, what I would call initial timing. A lot of this has to be done essentially, at least on a preliminary basis, by the end of this year. Things are gonna be happening faster very shortly. So that consumed the whole meeting, but it was a good discussion. We covered a lot of ground and I think both council members present and staff have a pretty good feel now for what we have to do this year. Councilmember Franch and Councilmember Merkley, you anything to add to that?
Crystal clear, fantastic.
I would say maybe just that the, you know, we discussed Pierce County's COAT Plan amendments that are moving forward as well.
I would just say, you know, we gave a tremendous thank you to our staff for the work that they've done so far on this. And so I wanted to thank them publicly in this capacity too. They really have worked hard to keep us aware of what's going on with these really, really important issues regarding growth. And so just a big thank you to the staff and the mayor for all the, all their hard work. They've really, it's been great to actually have this much information, whereas we just didn't have that before, so thank you to staff.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. And then we have, I know, but we have another council report. We have a Parks Commission report from Councilmember Abersold.
Yes, thank you. We met on February 3rd for a public meeting. The Parks Commission opened up and the minutes were approved. We had a public hearing regarding the restoring the park's name, where the mayor introduced the ad hoc committee, which consisted of Louis Teeman, who was one of the presenters, Brandon Rayan also was a presenter, and Jennifer Keating, as well as Amber Hayward of the Pilup Tribe Linguistics Council. We took pub, public comment from, I should say, they took public comment from Dr. Kazik, Linda Pritchard, Councilmember Denson, and also Jennifer Keating. And the commission is recommended and moves to ask our council to to rename Ansic Estuary Park to Austin Park and establish Twalaka Estuary, also to recognize the ancestral homeland of the Swabash people. They also gave an update on Parks Appreciation Day. They feel that they're gonna move that to the fall. Roger, I think Henderson is his last name, gave a subcommittee update. And Director Langham gave us a update on the parks. And that concludes my report on the Parks Commission meeting.
Thank you.
I'm assuming Councilmember Abersold didn't, I thought I heard him say Ansic Park. I'm assuming he meant Austin Park.
I did, my pen, I'm sorry, when I was writing was running out of ink, so it's kind of trying to reinterpret my chicken scratch from that day.
Yeah, so we're not renaming Ansic Park.
No, sorry.
Very good.
Thank you.
But we can talk about it if you want to.
Councilmember Woo.
Yes, thank you. You know, we get these reports every other week from City Administrator Bob Larson, and usually right at the top of the list is all the code enforcement that Officer Blodgett has to do. And I'm sure that probably the Community Development Department is in there, and I'm sure Public Works is in there. But I just wanted to give a shout out to Officer Blodgett. What he does is not always easy and not always appreciated by the people that he talks to. So I thank you, Officer Blodgett, for that.
Thank you, Councilmember Woo. Thank you, we'll make sure, Kelly will make sure it gets to him as well. Okay, other council comments. Yes, we also, we had, one mentioned, we had asked the chamber if they would consider the 21st and 22nd of August, the third weekend in August for the maritime, as opposed to the 4th. We'd also told them that we would honor the 4th if they had wanted that. We did get a email from them or a letter from the NMDA that they, they are seeking approval for the 21st and 22nd. So that's great, they listened to us. And it will also help with staff, because I know of a lot of our officers and our Public Works are gone the last week in August, sometimes for the next following weekend. Now, we still have to okay that with our departments. We still have to have a go to our Public Works and our chief to sign off on it. But we did want to let council know that they're planning the gig festival the 21st and 22nd of August at the moment. So great, we have a couple announcements of other meetings. We have our Public Works Committee meeting February 9th. We also have a work-study session this Thursday. We knew that, it's not on this list here, but we knew that there's a, we needed a work-study session. And it's, what time is it, 3:30? 3:30, we also added, what did we add? Yes, we also added a parcel discussion on the west, parcel west of the treatment plant to that discussion. And we have a civic center is closed this coming Monday, a week from today, the 15th, for President's Day, and then a boards and commission candidate review for February 16th. And with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
No, to adjourn.
All those in favor say aye.
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 All right, thank you, everyone, have a great evening.
All those in favor say adios.